Hello, everybody, and welcome to TC Palm Editorial Board Meeting to interview candidates for Port St. Lucie City Council District 4. I'm columnist Gil Smart, and I'm joined today by fellow editorial board member Larry Reesman, columnist and community editor. I'm going to lead today's questioning, and then I'll open it up to Larry at the end if he's got any questions. Visuals editor Kelly Rogers is directing video coverage from behind the scenes. If we get any questions from our social media audience, we might decide to pose one or two of those at the end of this session. I want to thank our candidates, incumbent Jolien Caraballo and Thomas Vincent, for streamlining this process by completing their candidate questionnaires ahead of time. Board members have reviewed them, and you can do the same. They are, you can be found at tcpalm.com/elections along with other stories, videos, and information about the upcoming November 3 election. At the conclusion of today's interview, editorial board members will discuss possibly writing an editorial to recommend a candidate in this race. We've got several questions for the candidates. We might end up having more of a conversation than just a simple Q and A. Our goal is to be done in 45 minutes to an hour at most, and because of our time constraints, I'm going to ask our candidates to keep their answers concise and be respectful of one another. We will start with the incumbent, Ms. Caraballo. Why don't you briefly introduce yourself briefly and tell folks who you are and why you're running for office?
Thank you very much, Mr. Smart. My name is Jolien Caraballo, and I'm currently the councilwoman for District 4. I've been a resident for Port St. Lucie for more than 29 years, and my husband and I, Ben, have been married for 20 years, and we have two gorgeous children. And I love the city of Port St. Lucie, and that's the reason why I serve. I grew up here, went to local schools as well, and I, I just, I just have to tell you, we have a very special place. And it has been a privilege and an honor to serve the last four years and being able to do whatever we can to just grow this beautiful city. And I am very confident, and I feel that the council has done an excellent job collectively, and it is my hope that I'll continue to have the support moving forward.
Okay, great. Mr. Vincent, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for office.
Absolutely. So I'm proud to call the city my home. You know, I grow, I grew up here, and while I was growing up, I attended the public schools here, starting with Morningside Elementary all the way to Indian River State College. You know, we, I would always go out and play with my community, out in Tradition, and we would all play sports and just have a load of fun here. The reason why I am running for this District 4 City Council seat is so I can turn Port St. Lucie into a 21st century city where our citizens are able to live surrounded by art, culture, and entertainment while not being burdened by excessive tax bills for themselves or their businesses.
All right, very good. We're going to stick with Mr. Vincent here. I get to crack, first crack at this question. "Port St. Lucie is widely touted as one of the fastest-growing cities in Florida, if not all of the United States. How can the city continue to grow at the rate it is growing while at the same time preserving the quality of life that so many people come here to enjoy?"
So I've mentioned before in my tax plan that we will reduce taxes by increasing the tax base, right? That is the most important part. And that does not mean getting rid of single-family homes, but that does mean that in where Port St. Lucie is expanding, we need to increase our density slightly and just have these three-story apartments built out in places such as the Village Parkway area. And when doing that, we will be able to keep most of our single-family homes here to allow our families to live their dream life while still being able to lower their tax bill.
Okay, good. Jolien, how do you keep growing at this breakneck pace and preserve the quality of life?
So I'm really glad that you asked this question, and I hope I can keep it concise because there's a lot of information here. So Port St. Lucie was the fastest-growing city during the economic boom, and that also meant during the downturn, we had the hardest hit as well. But suffice to say, we are now back on top. I feel we're growing at a great pace. But what's really important for the public to understand that a lot of Port St. Lucie, or most of it, is completely entitled, which means to the general public that all those spaces that you're looking at are called for, and they're kind of already directed in what direction they're going to move to. So we still continue to have a large amount of residential growth, but with Southern Grove, that's also going to change it up a bit. That's part of the quality of life is basically providing jobs, and the Southern Grove area that 1,200 acres the city has is going to, is hopefully going to help provide that. Back when the GDC days occurred, and you've had all these different lots that were pre-platted, there weren't a lot of plans put forward that actually considered the normal stuff: schools, businesses, beautification. I mean, we're having to adjust what was done before and then have the vision for the future. And so I can say that I championed Floresta Drive. Floresta Drive had been part of the council plan in previous years. One of the very first things I did when I got on the council is to bring back Floresta Drive. And why was this important? Floresta is one of the oldest roads in the city, and it is the, it is a main arterial roadway. It was an F-rated road by FDOT, and it has a school and major pedestrian traffic on it, and it is the only major arterial in the city that lacked sidewalks. And also, one can, depending how you look at aesthetics, Floresta needed to be beautified in many ways. And thank you to the actual residents who voted for the sales tax. Because of that, that is what's happening. We broke ground this past week, and construction's beginning today, so we're excited about that. And then for the future, with our PUD and our master development plans, and you can see some of that already happening in Tradition and on Becker, we're, we've already put in plans in our master plans, working with these developers, to ensure that they are putting in beautiful landscaping, roundabouts, art. We're getting a beautiful sailboat art that's going to be on Becker Road in the near future that the developers are putting in as part of their plan. So it's really making sure that we have the vision to, to bring in those beautiful projects and those high quality of life. Also, many of the developers also have to put out park space that the city will further develop. We're working on that. I think of Riverland Kennedy, who is doing this huge paseo that's going to be amazing out west. And so there's a lot of things that goes into this planning, but quality of life is one of those top things that our city council is always looking at when it, when the city continues to grow at the future, half a million population that it's expected to be.
Okay, very good. This is a, Jolien, we'll start with you on this one, and this is sort of a related question. The, much of the city's growth is now, has now shifted. The weight of Port St. Lucie has kind of sort of shifted to the west, the Tradition area, Southern Grove. Most of the action, if you want to term it that, is taking place out there. But there are concerns that Eastern Port St. Lucie, the US-1 corridor and some older other areas could be left behind as the economic growth sort of migrates out west. What do you do to ensure that the entire city prospers, not just Western Port St. Lucie?
Thanks, Gil. That's, that's, that question gets me excited, if you can't tell. So I, as District 4 councilwoman, that is, the Eastern Corridor is in my district, and I am a very, very strong advocate for the district on the eastern side. And so what, some of the things that we're looking at, obviously, is the city center. The city center property has been a challenge due to the, the prior Lilly-Zong and what happened in the past, as well as now it's kind of in limbo, and the FCC has hold of it on the federal level, and they're trying to find a way to get it sold. In the strategic planning session that the council had this past year, we talked about it deeply of how we can, and it's actually in our strategic plan, how we're going to address city center, and the city is going to have to really look at that closely to decide on how we can improve that current situation because that's an anchor in the eastern side. In addition, there are parts of the CRA, because that's under a CRA Master Plan, there are parts of it that also qualify for the, the economic, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the word. It's the, it's failing me at this moment, but there's a federal economic plan to allow help in taxation in regards to businesses that want to grow there. And I actually met in Washington DC to discuss it, to actually expand that current area to be able to provide more incentives for businesses coming in. Also, it is my hope that we have business tax reform. It's something that I've advocated on the council for continually, and it is not just the lowering of business taxes that is vitally important for our community, but it's also how do we utilize those funds currently? And I would like to see those funds completely utilized at all, at all possible ways towards business and how we can help small business particularly. So in the eastern side, in the older parts of the city, we have older facades. So maybe it's through a facade improvement grant that we can do, or the businesses can provide a matching grant. Maybe it's, it's providing micro grants since they're more home-based businesses. So we're, I'm constantly trying to find ways to revitalize on the eastern side, but in the meantime, I feel that the council collectively, not just me, realizes that we have to have a pulse always on the eastern district, and they are just as, as excited as I am to be able to make sure that we are responsive to maintain a balance of the quality of life.
Okay, very good. Mr. Vincent, question to you. What do you do to make sure that the eastern side of Port St. Lucie doesn't get left behind as the western side races ahead?
So everyone knows that under a previous type of administration here with Port St. Lucie, we lost a lot of money on the eastern side with the city center and that area. So we built that huge parking garage, and the idea behind that is that there would be a lot of traffic going to that area at all times. And yes, there are a few events where that place gets crowded, but I think what we need is heavier traffic off of US-1 into that area to bring more economic development and creative capital into that region. So that would be sectioning off part of the city center specifically only as an art gallery. That means building a museum right next to it. That means building a performing arts theater right next to it. And when we do those things, not just people in our city, but people from neighboring cities and neighboring counties will then want to come in, and that will increase the quality of life and economic development on that eastern side by supporting the local businesses over there and by giving the people the happiness of being able to go do something.
Okay, very good. Let's stick with Mr. Vincent, and let's stick with the topic of economic development. "Port St. Lucie is a commuter city. According to the Economic Development Council of St. Lucie County, 60% of the 100,000 workers in the county, most of them in Port St. Lucie, work outside the county. With I-95 and the turnpike providing access, that's easy to do, but what can Port St. Lucie do to foster job growth right here at home to keep workers right here at home?"
So with Port St. Lucie's population explosion among these past years, we've been trying to get businesses to come to us. My belief, with the evidence that I have provided on my website, votethomasvinson.com, shows that we are doing it the wrong way, and that is that we are subsidizing businesses to then come to us and then pledge to hire workers. But the fact of the matter is, is the ROI on that does not work out to be as well as other solutions we can have. What I have proposed is instead of our tax dollars going to these businesses, instead we give it back to our people through means of educating our labor force and investing in our infrastructure. Once we do this, companies like Tesla, our mayor won't have to write a letter to because Elon Musk will be writing a letter to us himself. That only happens with an educated workforce. That does not happen with subsidizing their taxes.
Okay. Jolien, how do you foster more jobs, more good-paying jobs in Port St. Lucie?
So, and that's exactly what the council's currently doing. First of all, I, I mean, with Southern Grove and also in combination with the county, so we have to work collectively, right? We do have a particular program that would allow certain industries, depending on the type of job, and it also has to qualify with the amount, it has to be over the average salary in St. Lucie County to be able to qualify for this tax incentive or the tax abatement program. And we have been successful with CMCO, CMTOM, Project Bullet, which is going to bring starting 380 jobs and potentially over 700 jobs in the future. And we are not subsidizing the way that it is being portrayed. Unfortunately, councils in the past had an error in judgment, and they decided to, to subsidize things such as actual infrastructure and buildings, and we're all fully aware of the past. But what we have done in the future, and the council actually prior before me, I don't want to take credit for this, they actually put in an ordinance to never allow what is called a covenant to budget inappropriate. And they have taken those proper measures. And we've also adjusted our debt policies and all of our other policies to ensure that those, those challenges never, ever happen again. And we're working closely with the EDC to be able to vet these companies and ensure that these companies coming into the city are providing the benefits that they are promising, and they also have the plan to do that. When, when we look at the broader scope of the, of the actual future of, of the, of the economic development and the job corridor, it's important to know some, to know what's happening. So we had a great economist come in, I think it was the retreat, last summer retreat, or maybe this, this past retreat, where he had discussed what, what the economy looks like, what are the potential opportunities? And if you haven't seen that presentation, it's probably on video, Mr. Reesman and Mr. Smart, you can probably go back and watch it. I want to say it was last year. And he talked about what the future potential was for our community. And first of all, I know we're heading down the right track because we do have manufacturing and industrial coming in, which were some of the things he had alluded to. But it's also important to know that Port St. Lucie has a very high quality of life at a very low level of cost to the average consumer. Forty-five minutes to our south is West Palm Beach, a major metropolitan area that provides wages and jobs of the cost of living of West Palm Beach. And so many people actually take advantage of that and go down south. Our goal as a city is to provide those jobs closer to home so people don't have to travel so far. And with the Southern Grove corridor and the plan that the council's put in, in place to ensure that those higher-wage-paying jobs are coming in, that's exactly, that's exactly the right step that we're doing moving forward. And in regards to education, the city has worked closely with IRSC, working on their manufacturing program. It has been a challenge, but we're going to continue. It's on our strategic plan to hopefully see a vocational technical school coming in the future. We work with Kaiser. We work with multitude of education partners to target exactly what the EDC said. They did a skill gap study. We're aware of our skill gaps. The city doesn't have a lot that we can do because we're not the school board, and we don't have control of those institutions, but we're trying to make the right steps, like with Cleveland Clinic, for example, to be able to bring those highway jobs and also provide the education that can do that.
Okay, good, good. We have a question here from one of our Facebook viewers, and it actually dovetails into my next question. You can see it on the screen now. "How could Port St. Lucie property taxes be reduced? As a retiree with a home valued at $250,000 and zip code 34973, my taxes are over $5,000 a year." This is Don Hornbeck. Let's talk about taxes. According to Florida Tax Watch, St. Lucie County has the highest average total property tax mileage rate in all of Florida. Port St. Lucie's rate is higher than the county average. It's not the highest in the, in the county. Fort Pierce is higher, but still. And this is not all Port St. Lucie's fault, obviously. County levies a good portion of those taxes. But what can the city do, and this question's to Jolien, what can the city do? The city has reduced its mileage rate several years in a row. Can it go any lower? Can it provide tax, more tax relief for someone like Mr. Hornbeck here?
Absolutely, and that's what I think our councils continue to do. I mean, every year, we look at our budget very closely. We are fiscally focused, like I like to call it, to make sure that we are providing a high-quality-of-service at the lowest rate possible. When you look at the actual tax bill, and, and I think the, the, is it Mr., I don't want to say his damn name wrong, was it Mr. Hornbora? I would like to just say thank you for that question, and please, please feel free to reach out to City Hall at any point in time, and myself or someone on our team will go through your tax bill for you. So there's only two lines on that tax bill which I have control over, which is, one is the city of Port St. Lucie, and the second one is the PSL vote at debt. Both of those line items were decreased again this year, and we're continuing to do that as we move forward. We have to also make sure that we are adjusting quality of life as the city continues to grow. The city of Port St. Lucie this past year, when we passed our budget, and actually we just did our first reading this past Monday, we wanted to lower it as much as possible so that the average home price of $240,000 would not see a tax increase at all this year. And what we did was is, we did that plan, and, and I can tell you that there is a lot more that goes into it, where with the property taxes and as far as including the property appraisal increase on your taxes that we don't have control over as well. But we as a city, I, I hope that it's, it's clear to the public, we're aggressively always looking at how we can lower taxes. And during COVID, in fact, we didn't just lower taxes. We usually have a, an average 1.5% increase annually for utility. We kept that, we didn't increase it this year because we knew that there was, there was a hardship here. There's usually an increase about $5 for your stormwater improvements to ensure that we have great quality of water and stormwater, and we don't have flooded roads. That also was not included this year, and the solid waste rate stayed the same. So, and, and as I said before, we're looking at different programs with the business taxes as well as permitting. We're constantly looking at how we can cut back, maintain our quality of life, and provide the best rate possible to the public.
Mr. Vincent, throw the question to you. Taxes, are they too high? What can the city do to bring them down?
So as I mentioned before, all we need to do is focus on increasing our tax base, but we also need to focus on our ROIs. As I mentioned before, with instead of helping out businesses, we help out our workers, and businesses will come, right? That's an instance of helping our ROIs. But in regard to increasing our tax base, the Southern Grove area is ripe for development. And what that means is that we can build those apartment complexes out there, and what that will do is that that will increase our tax base enough to decrease our tax bill, not just the rate, the bill itself. And what that does is that doesn't give us the con of having an apartment complex in your backyard, but it still gives you the pro of having a lower tax bill. I think that's what every single person in the city wants. I think that when you build apartment complexes, it brings more affordable housing to bring more people into our city in the first place to allow more people to thrive here. I think it is fairly cut and dry, and what we need to do, there is data that shows it. There's data on my website at votethomasvinson.com that tells you exactly how it's been done in the past and exactly how we can do it in the future after this election.
Sorry about that. Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Mr. Vincent, we'll stick with you on this next question. It has to do with the Indian River Lagoon. The Indian River Lagoon and clean water is a perpetual issue here in our neck of the woods. Is the city doing enough to ensure or to do its part in terms, in terms of the lagoon and the waterways, keeping them clean, keeping nutrients out? What, if anything else, in your opinion, could and should be done?
Absolutely. So Florida is known for having one of the most fragile ecosystems in all of America. Our entire nation, we take the cake for having the most fragile ecosystem. And a part of that is because of our waterways, right? We had the huge algae issue not too long ago, and that is something that we continue having to face. One of the plans on my website talks about environmental sustainability. Now, this is something that can be done without spending tax dollars at all. What this comes down to is regulation of those apartments that I mentioned in Southern Grove. As the councilwoman mentioned before, we're on our way to hitting half a million people, and if we don't have a long-term sustainable plan for our environment, then it won't work out well. What I have proposed is that amongst those apartments, we include things such as water submetering and allowing for easier public transportation throughout that entire area because with the density that comes with those apartments, that's something we can do. So that'll have less cars on the road, and that'll save anywhere between 40% to 60% of the new water consumption that comes out of there. That is how we long-term keep our environment safe, and it won't cost the taxpayers a dime.
Okay, thank you for that. Jolien, water quality, the lagoon. How's the city doing on that? And what should the city be doing?
So we're working hard. I mean, and that, and so, so we talked about developers earlier in regards to how we look at the development of beautification, but also stormwater is critical. And, and there is going to be a growth in population, and with that, you have road, you have road runoff and vehicle runoff from, from travel, from travel and commute. And so we, we have an aggressive stormwater plan, and we continue to have great ideas on how we're going to preserve that. And, and let me just also add to, which may not go with this piece of it, but we're also looking at creative ways to allow accessibility to stormwater ponds so we can turn them into recreational areas as far as for just passive walking and biking to expand our amenities for the community. Now, septic-to-sewer is always a big topic, and so the city, as you know, was a vanguard, as they like to say on the council, for the septic-to-sewer program, and that was way before me, and they did an excellent job to make sure that we implemented that. But we have a bigger challenge now, and that is how do we convert the remaining septic systems over to sewer? And the council's been working on that diligently. We currently were able to obtain through advocacy a $100,000 grant from the state of Florida to be able to allow us to help convert those septic-to-sewer. And how are we going to use that money is by, we're focused on, we did two microbial tracking studies. The city worked with FAU, and we want to thank them for their partnership, to provide us some data to really hardest where exactly these problem areas are. Currently, the number-one target for septic-to-sewers is the Sagamore Basin, and that's where we have our largest issue. And we are offering a 50/50 match grant, which if you, if you are willing to pay 50% of your conversion, we're going to use that $100,000 grant towards 50% of that conversion rate. The challenge is, when it comes to the full conversion, and I've said this on the council before, is that monthly bill, after that point, it's basically you're mandating something, you're requiring a monthly bill for fixed income and for lower-income individuals in our community. So how are we going to finish the conversion without creating a massive issue for those individuals? And we're working with CDBG and our federal funds to see how we can make that happen. So this is a pilot program. We're going to, we're going to try it out. We're going to see how that, that works, and it's going to be reported back to council hopefully in the near future so we can decide on how we can move forward with the conversion for septic-to-sewer. It is my hope that our council will, will be the one that actually fixes the, the finality and finishes it off strong, and I think we will get there. McCarty Ranch, I am, I am proud of McCarty Ranch. McCarty Ranch, that is the, the location out west that's going to provide, number one, I always could say it's going to provide clean water for a half a million people. And water shortage isn't necessarily talked about as much, but it was a big issue, and it's going to continue to be a big issue in the future, and it's going to take 21% of the nutrients out of this, out of the North Fork and actually clean it before it goes back in. Area 1, 2, and 3 are, I believe 3 should be completed as well. We're continuing to work with DEP in the state to get the additional funding, and there's even discussions with staff that there might be another opportunity to open up even more water retention to be able to take in more water to clean it. And then the last thing I would say is education. We've, you guys seen some parks that have come up, especially in the Westmoreland Track, or what we would like to call the future port. It is my hope that with the historical homes going in there, the botanical gardens, working with the schools and doing education, really getting people educated about the water again and excited. When I was growing up in Florida and going to the beach and doing my own litter pickups, you know, I got to see the plastic bags in the water. And I remember my dad saying to me, you know, honey, that gets around a turtle, that gets around a dolphin, you know, and we would go and we would do our part and pick it up. It's important that our youth has a connection to the water so they continue the forward track that we've all been doing as a community. And so it is my hope also to, to work on creating educational programs in the state to be able to see that happen. By the, what we're doing, I think, one of the ideas was a park ranger program that I came up with, to actually have a park ranger that would go around and educate our kids.
Okay, very good. We have a question here on Facebook that I want to sort of touch on here. It's from Kristen Plain, and if Kelly could bring that up. "It touches on the idea of the issue of crime taxes and the police department. Is the police department receiving enough funds to keep us safe?" And this question, go to Jolien first. "Obviously, policing is much in the news these days for obvious reasons. There's a push to defund policing in some communities. That has not happened here on the Treasure Coast, but it stands to reason that as Port St. Lucie grows, 500,000 people, you said, the demands on the police department are going to grow as well. Is the city prepared for that?"
Yes, we are. The city of Port St. Lucie is the safest city, the safest, largest city in Florida, and we have held that rate consistently. And our council and myself, we are very, very in tuned and engaged in making sure that we keep that happen. And currently, we're, we have plans for a future district, District 5 out west, and we had, I think, 27, might have been 27, 29 employee increases this year, and I, and I want to say only two of them, maybe three, were not in the police department. We have to continue to expand our police department as our city grows. Ms. Plain, your, your question is very, very, very accurate to the times. We have to make sure that to maintain our safest city status. We are supporting our police, and we also make sure that not just that we support them with the employees that are needed to be able to be on the field, but we also make sure that their equipment, they have the, the equipment that they need, the vehicles that they need to be able to answer the call when the call is made. We have an Excelsior Police Department, and that's the rating that they have. And, and even though there's been these calls, our police department is very in the front, in the forefront of making sure that we're addressing not just the concerns from the criminal natures of what they deal with, but also the community concerns as well. So I am extremely, extremely proud of our concerns as well. So I am extremely, extremely proud of our police department.
Okay, Mr. Vincent, the police department, is the city going to have to spend more on it as it grows? What's too much? Is there a balance to be struck here?
Absolutely. So at the end of the day, it all comes down to the data, right? And I want to talk about her question directly. She talked about specifically her tax bill, and then also when it came to more people and more crime. That area out in the Southern Grove, when I mentioned building those apartments, those are areas that were already going to be covered with single-family homes. And yes, though it is slightly more people, those people will also be paying for the police department, right? So the needed police that we then have to add into that area because there's more people, those people will make sure to pay for that, right? You will not have to pay for the watch that they have, and that is easily done with just how the tax system works when it comes to those apartment complexes and their value and the property tax rate that comes along with it. So your tax bill will not change because of that population increase. As I mentioned before, it will even lower, and the police will still allow to maintain safety and grow as an organization because more people are coming in and paying their salaries.
Okay, very good. Mr. Vincent, this one is for you. You have made turning Port St. Lucie into a 21st century city is sort of a centerpiece of your campaign. Culture, let's talk about culture. Port St. Lucie, you might say, doesn't have a whole lot of culture. It doesn't really have a whole lot of sort of performing arts venues. Some, you know, some museum-type places, that sort of thing. For a city of its size, it seems to be sort of lacking in these sort of amenities. But how do you bring them? What specifically would you do to boost culture in Port St. Lucie?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned before, creative capital is something that is very important when it comes to culture. And what you can do is out, like I mentioned before, by the Civic Center, is you build the art gallery, you build the art museum, the performing arts theater, all in those areas, and it kind of becomes a cultural hub right around there. And then what you can do as well, because what we need for those to work is artists, right? We need artists that can draw, that can paint, that can act. And what we do by doing that is we allow artists a type of loner's equity in where they are renting, rather that be the new apartments out by Southern Grove that I would love to build, or in the house that they are trying to stay out by the east side to stay near that cultural hub. What that does is that incentivizes them to come here to Port St. Lucie to express themselves. And what we do with that is we give them the means necessary, the resources and the capital necessary for not just them to enjoy themselves and do what they love, but for every single person in our city and our neighboring cities and neighboring counties to come here and enjoy the culture that we will create that way. We will become the new cultural hub of South Florida if we do it that way.
Okay, thanks. Jolene, Port St. Lucie, it's not really a cultural hub, maybe it never will be, but what do you do to boost culture, you know, on behalf of the people, the growing people, population of the city?
So in the Southern Grove area, we have, we're actually in the process of the master plan process, and we actually have already designated areas for entertainment and opportunity. But culture is an interesting one. So I was a member of the Port St. Lucie Historical Society and actually president of their board prior to this, and I've always been very passionate about culture within our community. And as I said before, the GDC model did not give us the ability to really say, oh, we're going to put a big performing arts center right here. And so with the Western Grove, it gave us the ability to be able to start looking at the potential plans of where we could place that. And it does become a question. Does the private sector move first? Does the actual public sector do it? And that's always a challenge of having to decide where that ends up lying. But right now, I know we have placeholders. The Civic Center, the Mid-Florida, let me make sure I say this right, the Mid-Florida Credit Union Center is doing a great job. You know, the Civic Center has been a challenge for our community because we wanted to see it continue to thrive and provide great festivals under new leadership. As a new director, there's a new director over there for the last couple of years. Ms. McCarthy has done an excellent, excellent job bringing concerts. Before COVID, we were doing the I Love St. Lucie concerts, and we were teaming up with the St. Lucie Cultural Alliance to get those concerts done. And it was actually pretty successful. We were bringing some, I mean, not A-rated names because there's not necessarily enough space to hold that kind of population, but we were bringing some pretty, pretty well-known names like Styx. I can't remember the other ones, but I know Styx was the big one for me. I was like, that was actually really cool. And so in regards to art galleries, there was a question earlier in regards to art galleries, and I want to make sure that we do touch on, we do have an art gallery, it may be small, but we have an art gallery in the Civic Center, and we have displayed some of the great, some great displays there. One that I went to was Mindy Fetterman's display that was excellent for children that had been abused, sexually abused, which that display was very, very powerful. And so we've done some great work in the Civic Center. And as far as culture abroad, the city, as it moves forward, we continue to try to find ways to integrate art within our city. And we also have a Public Arts Advisory Board. There's a lot I could talk about this. We have a Public Arts Advisory Board. We also take some of the funds because their developers either have to apply art, or they actually then have to put into a development fund to give us public art. And the Art Advisory Board is in charge of actually being the ones to disperse those funds and make those recommendations. We always try to target local artists to ensure that their voice is heard in their actual application of art. We're getting ready to put bus shelters, and we want to do art there. And so it is my hope that, you know, more, when you do something, you draw more of it. So I would love to see, in fact, I was saying it to my city manager, I think at the last meeting, I would love to see a performing arts center in the future, and there might be space in the Southern Grove to make that happen.
Okay, good, good. Question to Jolene. It's hard for me to write anything nice about Port St. Lucie without hearing from several people who want to remind me about Digital Domain, or VGTI, or Tory Pines, some of the decisions of the past that ultimately cost the city hundreds of millions of dollars in debt. It's my view that it's unfair to blame current city officials for any of that. But the question remains, how does the city avoid missteps like that in the future, particularly as it goes about trying to boost development in Southern Grove?
That's a really good question. And so you want to know that you learn from history, and I think that the council, this council and the council right before us also made sure to put that in place. And I think I hit on that earlier with the covenant to budget appropriate. And what happened was, is essentially, and I'll just explain it in layman's terms, is that the city agreed that if for some reason something didn't work out with a particular situation, that they would incur the responsibility for it. That was what the covenant to budget appropriate was. That's what happened with Digital Domain and VGTI and those things of that nature. Back the council before me, they actually passed via ordinance that that would not be a system that we would allow, and it would be passable by a council in the future. And so that was a big one. That was a real, real big one. And you know, I know it's hard because it is the past, and we're all paying for it. I'm paying for it. You know, I pay property taxes, I own my home, and I'm paying for it too. And I think the most important thing that we need to do as a board is to really make sure that we are examining every item carefully, that we make sure that it's always going to be a win for the public and a win for the city, that we are not, we're not, we're not going to do anything that is not part of normal business. The current incentive program that we offer, for example, for the tax abatement program for those individuals with large industries that want to come in and provide jobs, I've checked because I'm the second vice president of the Florida League of Cities, so I work very closely networking with other cities to see what best practices are. That program is a very, very common program that is utilized throughout the entire state of Florida. So it is one of those, it's nothing unique. When I have had to work on small items that might pertain to the past, let's say, on the council, when I ask, I ask this question just because out of curiosity and wanting to understand and be educated on what happened, I'm like, is this a unique thing? There were a couple cities that kind of did the same thing. Orlando, for example, did Burnham, and that was a similar situation, but it wasn't widely used. And so I think best practices and learning from each other is really important when we look at how we work with businesses, so we're not stepping out of line. I think our council is really, I think it's hard when you live with that history, even though you're not responsible for it, not to be awake to it every single day, not to be aware of it, not to say, I need to make sure that every box is checked, and we're not going to be dealing with something in the future, or looking at our legacy differently in the future. What I would like the public to know is that we're very much attuned to that, and that we are, we take it very, very seriously. And with everything in my power, and I'm sure everything in our council power, that won't happen ever again.
Okay, very good. Thomas, the city's made some spectacular missteps in the past. How does it avoid doing so in the future?
Absolutely. So what we have to do is we have to focus on the data, and as the councilwoman mentioned before, the history. You know, back during the Great Recession, when Greece was dragging down the euro with its insane amount of debt, what the European Union had to do was they had to stop Greece from ever being allowed to go into a budget deficit again. And the fact of the matter is, is the way you prevent it is you create an ordinance that does not allow the city to go into debt during times of economic growth. The only reason any government should ever go into debt is try to help their people get out of a terrible economic situation. A government should not go into debt during times of economic prosperity. This is something our federal government has been doing, and I've spoken out against it, and it's not something our city should be doing either. And when you go back to the data part of that, as I mentioned before, we need to use data from reputable sources such as McKinsey that will allow us to make good ROI choices with our dollars that is not a decision made by our leadership from their gut feeling and saying, hmm, you know, maybe this will work. We need data that shows that it does work before we start spending taxpayer dollars. We don't just need one expert to come in and tell us. Experts can be wrong sometimes. We need teams of experts with numbers in the leaders' faces so that the taxpayers know that their tax dollars are not being wasted as they were before.
Okay, very good. Our time's starting to run a little short here, so I'm going to ask, see if Larry has any questions for you guys? All right, if not, then I'm going to say, let, let's do closing statements here, or if you have something that we didn't discuss that you wanted to discuss, feel free to bring it up. A minute or two, Mr. Vincent, you're first up.
Absolutely. So everyone watching here today, just know that I'm here with you to clearly envision what our future can look like. Our job is to ensure that we willingly embrace a glorious day sooner rather than later, a day in which our leadership on one of the fastest growing cities in this nation becomes one led with empathy and bold vision, with individuals, all of us, all of us individuals, giving a voice in our community and making sure that we're heard. These are the people, my neighbors, who we need to put desperately back in power. That's all of us. And the question becomes, are we ready for that day? Because I know that I am. Just do me a favor, picture that day, a day in which we can begin to feel good about the knowledge that we have trustworthy, empathetic, bold visionary leadership running our amazing city. If you really envision that day, if you form the image in your mind and imagine what it would be like, it's a day of reminder. It's a day in which we know our work is far from over. Rather, that is a day that we start to work hard right after the election. That is the day when the real work begins. And we all know that in order for us to keep a hold on that position, we're going to need not just national or state leaders, but local leaders as well. Our local leaders, we do the most to directly impact you, my neighbor. And how are we going to get to that point? It all starts on the local scene with you voting in the upcoming November 3rd general election. We need to fight for this city council seat, as this fight is only growing stronger now, and we will create an unstoppable force with you, my neighbor, alongside it.
Okay, very good. Jolene, anything we didn't talk about you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'm going to just wrap it up fairly quickly, but I really want to take a moment just to thank you, Mr. Smart and Mr. Reisman for your time and the TC Palm group. And I'm going to say this because I really do feel what you guys do is difficult. In the media, you guys, the media gets hammered a lot on TV, and I know that our TC Palm, what I read, and sometimes, you know, we may not like what you say, but I do know that you work really hard to get the facts straight, and you really do work hard to get the story out there and provide information to the public. So your job is really important, and I just want to thank you for that. It has been an honor and a privilege to have served as the city councilwoman for District 4 for the last four years. I am so proud of how far we have come, and it is my hope that you see the results around you. In fact, I've lived in this community for so long, and I walk down the streets, and I still just feel like Jolene. People just come up and say, Jolene, you know, I went to high school and I grew up here and I see my friends, and I just still feel like Mia. I don't even feel like I have that title, councilwoman, and it's just an honor to hold that because you've entrusted me. Know that I show up to work every day, and that's what I think about. I think about you. I think about the trust that you've placed in me, the responsibility that you've placed in me, and how important it is for me to speak for you. Every time I'm on that board, when I ask a question, I'm asking that question for you. Every time, it may seem that I debate with my council members, and they're like, you know, what's the rub here? Not just me, but I believe we, as a team, are doing it. We do it for you. We want to continue to grow our awesome city, the seventh largest city in the state. But not only is it going to be the safest city, it's the best place. Right now, it's been rated the best place to retire, one of the best places to raise kids, one of the best places to be close to the beach. There's just so many things that I can say. And with the difficulties that we're facing as a country, with all the challenges that we have, you know, I am, I'm happy that Port St. Lucie is our home. And this home, I feel, is special. I hope you feel it's special too. And I'm asking for your support on November 3rd. Please vote. Jolene Caravalo for City Council, District 4. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. That's going to wrap it up for this interview here today. I want to thank our candidates for being here, for answering our questions. I thank the folks at home for watching. If you caught part of this broadcast but weren't able to see the whole thing, you can watch it in its entirety on our Facebook page and on our YouTube channel. We've got one more interview with candidates here, starting at 3:00 PM at Port St. Lucie, District 2. But again, I want to thank Mr. Vincent and Ms. Caravalo for being here. Thanks to the TC Palm team. We'll see you all again soon.